Okay, what are we doing here? Mike, are we adding anything to the agenda? Intergovernmental relations?
That was even me.
We've got that on the back, so we'll add 12.2 as... Okay.
It's already in there at 12.
I guess there's two of them, but I don't know. Does it make a difference that we have to add it?
They are...
All right. Okay, it is 8:30, and I'll bring to order the regular council meeting of Tuesday, June the 11th. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to that agenda? Counselor King?
Mr. Reeve, I would move the agenda as presented.
Motion's been made to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor? That is carried. We pre-circulated the minutes of the council meeting of May the 28th. Are there any errors or omissions?
I'll move the minutes as presented.
Okay. Motion's been made to remove the minutes of the council meeting of May 28th as presented. All those in favor? That is carried. Well, I don't know. Shall we go on to delegation? Seeing as all the delegates is here, and I know we're a little early, but if you guys want to come forward, that would be getting you out of here a little sooner. All righty. I think everybody knows everybody. Are we good? Are we good there?
Yeah, Mayor Kelly Clausen, this is Deputy Mayor Darwin Moon with me this morning. Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for asking us to attend this morning in response to our letter. If you drive down any street of small town or village in Alberta, you'll see that we all struggle with the same issues. Our infrastructure is deteriorating at rates that are faster than we can repair them. Most places are shrinking as business moves to larger centers, and our youth do the same. Linden is a rare exception. In our last two census counts, we've actually grown, and we'd like to continue that trend. Our provincial government requires us to plan for the future, and as you all know, that in the next, in the short term, we'll have to provide three-year operating budgets and five-year capital budgets. And I do believe as a small village, we must be self-sustaining with our operating budgets, and Linden is currently close to achieving that goal. The one that is more difficult to achieve is our capital budget. With reduced funding from the province and elsewhere, we are trying to move towards a more self-reliance on our capital budget, but it will take some time to get there. Our first step is needing a master infrastructure plan, so we know what our critical areas are, and we can better plan for them. We are here requesting your help in working towards our long-term capital budget by helping us determine the best route to go in the short term. And with our letter that we gave you, our request was for $200,000. And we're here to discuss it and answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Are there any questions for Kelly from council? So if you don't get the full $200,000, is there a go-to plan or go-after plan, or?
Our biggest thing we want to go right now is to work on our master infrastructure plan, and we've gotten rough quotes of around $200,000 to $250,000, somewhere in there, to do that, and we're still going to proceed with that plan. It might take longer than, so any, any funds are going to be greatly appreciated, but that is probably our first step that we need to do to find out. We can all see what sidewalks are broken or what streets are broken, but we need to do the underground investigation to see where our focus needs to be before we do the surface work.
Thanks, Kelly. Is there any other questions? Well, it doesn't look like there is. Thank you very much for coming. We will deal with this further on in our agenda.
That.
And, yeah, it's very important to make sure your underground infrastructure is there, because when you're one flush away from losing it, that's not, that's not good.
Yeah, well, we've had, we had a couple of issues, like some, like a lot of other towns this year with sewer lines and stuff, and, you know, you get three or four of them in a year, that's very costly, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Okay, well, thanks for presenting early that way. Okay, thanks, guys. Okay, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which would be 4.1. Public hearing. Pardon? Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. Yep, right, it's a ten. Our next agenda item is 5.3.1. Subdivision extension. Welcome, Barb.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. So we've had a request to do an extension of a subdivision. So there's actually four subdivision files on the table. The applicant is actually just rejigging the lands a little bit. There's no creation of more titles than are currently there, but he is rejigging some of that. So anyway, the subdivisions are related to the divisions of land in section twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-one west of four for the Badlands Motorsport Resort. The attached plan notes how the lands are to be reconfigured on titles. Lands noted as one, two, four, and five are to be consolidated into one parcel for the lower track area. Lands noted as area A, area B, and three are to be consolidated into the upper track. Landowners are given a year from the date of approval in which to meet the conditions of approval. If the conditions are met, the subdivision approving authority is required to endorse the subdivision to allow registration of land titles. There have been a few setbacks in meeting the details of some of the subdivision conditions. Multi-jurisdictional oversight has contributed to the challenge of meeting the deadline. The applicants are currently waiting to obtain their environmental approvals, which has taken longer than projected. The applicants are requesting an extension to meet the conditions of their subdivision approval. These subdivisions receive conditional approval on May twenty-ninth, 2017. A typical extension is granted for one year. In this case, the extension would be granted for another year until May twenty-ninth, 2020, one year from the date of the current subdivision expiration. I just wanted to note it as well that we did receive an email with concerns. Too late to put into the package, but I believe you've all received copies of that for consideration. Section 657, 46 of the MGA permits council to extend the one-year approval period whether or not that period has expired. There are no limits set in the MGA for either the number of extensions or the length of time an extension can be granted for. Landowners or their agents may make requests for an extension of the timeframes from council. Requests for extensions to subdivision approvals can only be issued by the council of the approving authority. It should be noted that granting an extension to the subdivision will trigger an extension to the development agreement in this case. The required fee was paid by the applicant, and our recommended action is that council move to grant a one-year extension to KNE 160126, 160127, 160128, and 160129 until May twenty-ninth, 2020. And council also moved to update the development agreement for Badlands Motorsport Resort to reflect the extension and the start date for the road construction to May fifteenth, 2020, as well as the required completion date to May fifteenth, 2022.
Thanks, Barb. Got pictures for us too, or are we just gonna?
There were some in the package. Let me.
That's fine if you don't.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
So.
A, B, and three are going to be consolidated? And one, two, four, five are consolidated?
A, B, and three, correct, will be one title, and one, two, four, five will be the second title.
So these haven't changed any from the original application?
No.
Okay.
And then the one on the right-hand side, I will just bring up, because what you see in that dotted area is lands that they are going to be putting into environmental reserve easement, and those will be part of the survey plan, so they will be designated lands that will be set aside and kept natural. With this environmental reserve easement, it can't be undone unless the project doesn't go forward. So once it's actually part of the subdivision and endorsed, it, it stays on the lands.
Are there any questions for Barb, council? Counselor Keever?
Is there any way of verifying why they haven't been able to get these things through?
We did have a meeting with them and with Alberta Environment, so that's been a little bit of their challenge. So Environment thought they were a month or two out of issuing their approvals when we met with them. So they are looking at getting some of that. They do have to do some, they had to do both for stormwater, and they had to do for some of the other compensatory wetlands on the properties that they were doing. So I think that's been a little more of a challenge than they were expecting.
Counselor King?
So what's the, what's the possibility they're coming back again for another extension?
That is, anybody can apply to do that, so that's really up to you as a council, whether or not you would consider that in the future. Right now, this is what they've requested. I think they felt that if they did get their approvals within that month or two, they would be able to proceed with getting some of the additional work done. But regardless of whether they get the extension or not, they can always reapply for the subdivisions. This is already an existing area structure plan, so there aren't limits as to when somebody has to come in and do those subdivisions. So he could reapply in the future for those as well, if he doesn't get an extension.
Counselor Keever?
So if they're reapplying, would they, the whole process start back with the?
Not with the area structure plan or with the direct control district. Those are already done. They are statutory plans, and so they are already in place. So, but with the subdivision, because it's a direct control district, I just will remind you that it's, it works a little bit differently. So we come to council for recommendation to MPC for the subdivision, and then any developments go to MPC for recommendation to council. Council's actually the approving authority for development. Council does the recommendations on subdivisions to the planning commission, and then the planning commission is the approving authority on the subdivisions. So these are a little bit unique compared to a normal process that we go through, so a few more pieces in this process from typical. So they would be starting over with the subdivision if they aren't granted an extension. No, that wouldn't start over, no. They're in that process right now, so they've submitted the documentation and the reports that they were required. I think they were required some additional information, which took them more time to collect and, and submit. And so that process is where it sits. It would only be our process that would be started.
And that would be after a six-month waiting period. Am I correct?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, what are, any more questions, or anyone prepared to make a motion? Counselor McGee?
Be, before we do that, I just wanted to emphasize that we still are having concerns, and several emails have come my way, many of them actually from the Rosebud area, as opposed to Neale County residents, in case that affects anyone's thought process. I just wanted to be sure that that was acknowledged.
Thanks, Counselor McGee. I did get a few emails yesterday with concerns also, so.
Can I ask another question? Barb, your sense from having chatted with them is that they actually are getting close? Like, I'm getting a little bit weary of the constant. Seems to be nothing ever happens, nothing ever happens, but it's always promised to happen, and I'm just wondering, what's your sense of the conversation?
I think Alberta Environment is a large hurdle for them, and once they get that portion done, then I think they will go forward on the detailed engineering for the road, which is the piece that we're waiting for. So that's what I have been led to believe the order of events that will occur. Once we receive that detailed engineering for the road, then we submit that to our engineers for review, and they still also have to go through the safety audit on that project. So that will be another third-party review of whether or not it meets engineering. It'll still have to be safely done as far as drivability. So those are two pieces that we're waiting for on our end, and that, I guess, I'm not in their office and in their conversations outside of what we've been told, so I believe they're expecting to move forward.
Well, before any of this moves ahead, the road has to be started or completed? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, for this subdivision, we, under the MGB, that decision, they had, we weren't allowed, we weren't allowed to look at a development permit.
Yes.
And we can't endorse the subdivision until there is payment or construction of the road. So there has to be some start to that project. The dates are defined within the development agreement. Again, if we proceed, they are bound by that agreement, which they've signed in the first place. And then if, at that point, there's still issues, then I guess we're, we're back at this table again.
We haven't seen any of the engineering for the road yet, have we?
Only the small portion, that, the eight-hundred-meter piece, that was the more problematic piece. That's the one where we had the detailed engineering. WSP had reviewed that. It had come back to council. They had done a few revisions to that engineered plan, and those had been addressed, so there were some concerns that WSP had. Those were addressed by the engineering company at the time. From our conversations with WSP, the remainder of the road is not nearly as problematic and would be more.
Well, there's a thirty-meter right-of-way for the rest of the road.
Yeah, and they would still have to purchase some of the road, because I, I think there's agreements in place, but I don't think they've purchased it yet. But it's, that one is a little more cookie cutter, the remainder of the road from what WSP had commented originally. But they're expect, we, we still expect that they have to submit all of that, and we would send it to our engineer for review.
Thanks, Barb. So what, well, what does council's wishes here? Counselor McGee?
I move to deny the extension of KNE 160126, KNE 126, 161, 0127, KNE 160128, KNE 160129.
Okay, we've got it up on the board. A motion's been made to deny the one-year extension. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor King?
So may I ask the question? If we vote to deny, that means they just, there'd be a lag period, and then they would come back and reapply?
Correct.
Is there any more discussion to the motion? Okay, call the question. All those in favor to deny the extension? Those opposed to deny the, the extension?
Sorry. I wasn't quite ready to vote. Can we start over again?
Okay, let's do it all over again. Motion is to deny the extension. All those in favor of denying the extension? Those opposed to denying? Motion is accepted, or carried. There's the word.
I apologize for my slowness there. I was still thinking it through, so.
Okay. So dealing with the second motion is irrelevant now?
Correct.
All righty. We will go on to 5.3.2, redesignation.
Okay, we've had a request to redesignate a 3.9 acre plus or minus portion of the northwest of twenty-nine, thirty-four, twenty-two west of four from the agricultural district to, to industrial district, and that's bylaw seventeen ninety-eight. The Hutterian Brotherhood Church of Huxley have applied to redesignate the subject lands from agricultural district to industrial district to construct and lease. from agricultural district to industrial district to construct and lease a standard cultivation cannabis facility for medical use. Recent additions to the land use bylaw 1773 have included requirements for both cannabis recreational production, cannabis retail facilities, and medical cannabis. Applications for cannabis recreation production facilities and use are required to redesignate their property to a direct control district. Medical cannabis production facilities are required to redesignate to industrial. This use is a discretionary use in the industrial district. If successful in their redesignation, an application for development will be taken to the municipal planning commission for approval. The applicant is required to obtain a license through Health Canada. The applicant for a license to cultivate has to prove to Health Canada that quality assurances, security measures, criminal background clearances, standard operating procedures and plans and processing plans all meet regulatory standards. Health Canada requires the following steps to their approval process. Initial application screening, review and security clearance, pre-licensing and approval process, and issuance of a license. And we will get more into their process during the public hearing later today. If the applicant gets through the screening, review, and security clearance, they will receive a confirmation of readiness prior to the issuance of a license. The final step required is the provision of a site evidence package and an onsite pre-licensed inspection. The following uses are included in the industrial district, and we've got a table in there just for information purposes. Again, in order to get this into the queue, we do need first reading and set the public hearing date. So recommended action is that council move first reading of proposed bylaw 1798. And council moved to schedule the public hearing for July 16th at 10:00 a.m. for the purposes of amending land use bylaw 1773 for the redesignation of a portion of the northwest of 29, 34, 22 west of 4, from the agricultural district to the industrial district. Additional options for council would be to set an alternative date for the public hearing or to request more information prior to first reading.
Thanks Barb. Is there any questions for the planner? Counselor King, or Counselor Keever?
I guess they have their ways of checking, but how do you do a criminal check on a whole organization with a whole bunch of people?
It's specific. You have to name people that are going to be used within the company and for specific purposes. So the regulations have a very set requirement, so, and again, we will get into this more in the public hearing because I will provide more information there. But they would have their directors, anyone to do with the corporation itself, their master growers, their processors, all of the parties involved in any step of the way have to do background clearances. So, and that's done through the feds and at the cost of the applicant. This is the site planned that they are proposing, so that area of land is what they're looking at to be redesignated, and the bylaw is attached as well.
Are there any other questions? Comments, concerns? Counselor King?
I would move that we give first reading to the proposed bylaw 1798.
Motion's been made to give first reading to the bylaw. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Would somebody like to schedule the date for the public hearing?
I move we schedule the public hearing for July 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, motion's been made to schedule the public hearing for July the 16th at 10:00 a.m. for bylaw 1798. All those in favor? That is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, what time we got here? Nine, so we're still good for a bit. We will go on to 8.1, strat planning. And Mike, are you taking that one?
Thank you. So the, the strat plan that's in front of council for approval today is almost the same document that you guys have seen previously. The last time that it was before you, of course, we had some direction to go back and add some wording to change, make a couple of minor wording changes to the document. So we've gone back and we've done that. Some of those were in, in the SWOT analysis and areas like that. And just, we've, we've inserted a sentence or two, just kind of putting that into layman's terms as to, you know, it's really assessing what's working for us and against us. As mentioned, we've taken out the operational plan. That'll of course be a related document that'll, that'll come back to council, but isn't necessarily a pure part of the strategic planning document. It'll be one of the follow-up actions coming out of, coming out of the approval of this, as will, again, as we talked about before, kind of going back and taking a look at those values and making sure that we're clear and, and agreed on what the, what the definitions of those are. But beyond that, the, the plan's back in front of you for, and if it meets council's wishes, then we'd look for approval of that plan and then administration would start putting the operational plans together to, to working towards achieving, achieving everything that's in that document.
Everybody's had an opportunity to look through the, the package, I do believe. Is there any questions for Mike? Or how do you want to do this? Do you want to go through it? Counselor King?
So Mike, this is, looks to me it's the same as what we saw before, just with a couple of the minor corrections that we talked about the last time.
That's correct, yeah.
So the document is basically as we approved, just with those changes included now.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
I move to approve the strategic plan.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the strategic plan as shown. Any discussion to that motion? Or any questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing as none, I'll call the, call for the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we will move on to 8.2, Neale Open House Discovery Fair. Hi Christine, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Good morning, Reven Council. I bring for you this morning a request for decision to host a Neale County Discovery Fair. At the strategic planning session in February, Neale County Council identified engaged communications as one of their strategic priorities. Hosting an open house as a discovery fair would provide Neale County Council and staff the opportunity to engage with residents and exchange information about Neale County services and projects in new, exciting ways. Staff and administration are suggesting the following type of event. Hosting the open house in a fair style with dedicated booths manned by Neale County staff for each department and topic. Possible booths could be strategic plan, Churchill Water Rehabilitation, Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan and Parks, Utilities Transfer Sites, Roads, Protective Services, Fire, Communications, Finance, Planning and Development, and Ag Services. Each booth will contain displays of information. Visual aids and demonstrations or other interactive elements will be included at each booth as well to showcase new, exciting, and interesting information to residents adding to their engagement. The event will feature a catered meal such as a barbecue and take place in the evening from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event will be family-friendly with Neale County-themed activities and games for children to play. Each residence will be handed, sorry, will be greeted and handed an all-access pass on arrival, and will receive a stamp from each booth that they visit. Passes stamped in full will be entered into a door prize draw at the end of the event. Facilitating the event in this way will allow for conversation and discussion between councils, residents, and staff in a relaxed, friendly atmosphere. Hosting the open house in the late summer would give staff time to prepare for the event and avoid interfering with the harvest season. Some dates to keep in mind, August 17th is our country market and long table dinner, that's a Saturday. And September 13th is our 75th anniversary celebration, which is a Friday. The Troschu Community Hall, Acme Community Hall, the Torrington Arena, and the Three Hills Community Center would be appropriately sized facilities to host the event. The Discovery Fair could also be held in part with the upcoming anniversary celebration at the Three Hills Curling Rink. The current 2019 approved budget would cover two of these events. If council wishes to conduct more than two, additional funds would be required. So the budget for the rate pair meetings, we have $15,000. Cost per open house, food, venue, advertising, prize, and swag would be about $6,500. Display materials, these would be a one-time cost that we could use in the future as well, would be about $2,000. Some additional funds to consider is overtime for staff members that would be attending the event. The link to strategic plan is engaged communications attachments. I, I've included a draft communications plan for the Discovery Fair. Recommended action is that council approves to host Neale County Discovery Fair or fairs to be held in a location you choose, on a date you choose. And council options, council approves two Discovery Fairs, council approves one Discovery Fair, council approves one Discovery Fair and one combined with 75th anniversary, or council approves to combine the Discovery Fair with the 75th anniversary only, or council directs administration to bring back other options for open houses.
Thanks Christine, you did good.
Thanks.
Any questions from council? So we've got the September 13th celebration at the Curling Rink booked already?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Because depending on harvest, or how harvest works out this year, that could be an issue.
Yeah.
But it might not be an issue, because it might rain all of September.
If it doesn't rain all June, September will not be an issue.
True.
Personally, my, my thought on it is I, I'd like to see two potentially located different ends of the county. And I think outside of the anniversary celebration. That's my personal opinion.
So we have a budget for this, for the September 13th one that's separate from this, correct?
Right, yes. That's all 75th anniversary.
Yeah. Just wanting to make sure. So, I'm trying to think here. So we're looking at having two Discovery Fairs? Is that the consensus of council, or what, what's the rest of council feel? Counselor Christie?
I like the idea of two, but if the first one doesn't go very well, then what?
Can I guarantee it'll go well?
I guess my concern is participation, getting people there.
Yeah.
If one works really well, it may impact a really good response for the second one. It can go both ways, so I don't know whether we commit to two no matter what, or whether you do one and see where it goes.
We could do that as well, because really, all the preparation will happen before the first one. And by then, we'll have all the displays, we'll have everything ready. So then if you do want to move ahead with the second, we could plan it then.
There's food involved. So that sort of guarantees almost success.
Yeah, I know, any, any annual meeting, if you don't have a meal, it ain't gonna happen very well.
To that point, we'd also think if we are looking at having two, at two different ends of the, it could be a whole different, we can't say because it failed in one, it will, will let the nether. I don't think that's fair to the residents of the other side, so I believe in planning too, right off the bat with the optimism that it is going to be very successful.
I, I prefer the one idea. I don't know, I've seen two rate pairs meetings in the county and, you know, when you add the numbers together, and we still don't beat what we have at one good one. So you put all your efforts into the one, and if they want to come, they will come, no matter where it is.
Well, in some ways, this isn't a typical rate pair meeting either, because you're opening up and making it a family-friendly event as well.
Yes, yeah.
Certainly that will help on some of the younger family side of things. Might keep some of the grandma and grandpas away, because they don't want all that noise and chaos. But there's free food. Yes, Jim, I take your point, there's free food.
How much time does staff need to prepare for this? Like, if we hold it in, let's say in a month and a half away in the beginning of August or such, would staff have enough time to prepare for this? Or would they prefer to have it later in August? But we've already got the August 17th country market and long table, and then September 13th, so it's gonna be kind of tough to schedule two in between these two events already.
Yeah, I think that would, that would give us enough time to prepare, a month and a half. I mean, obviously, the longer we have, you know, the more we can do, but I think we could do that.
Okay, well, we gotta give somebody some direction here, and probably it's me that it needs the direction. So can we have some sort of a consensus? Are we, do we want to have one or two? One? Fay? Two? You don't care. Ken wanted two? Jim, one?
Two, I think if we could make it work, you get people.
Okay. So much for trying to get me out of a jam here, because I have no idea if we're at one or two.
Okay, well, we could make a motion and then, I don't, I don't know about dates, but my thought is we should have one in the north and one in the south. So I would say that we've talked Troschu and potentially Acme to get them north and south. So my motion would be that we approve to host Neale County Discovery Fairs to be held in Troschu and Acme on dates yet to be determined. And I would look to our staff to try to help us out there.
Okay, thanks Counselor King. We'll see where, where we end up here. We have a motion before us to hold two, one in Troschu and one in Acme. Dates to be determined. Is there any discussion to that motion?
Your two locations, though, Ken, are very close to the edges of the county. You're not drawing many people from south of Acme.
Okay, would you prefer, the problem is facility in Linden, right? That would be, would there be a sufficient, we have two Lindenites sitting here, the mayor. Like, the facilities that were suggested, Glenn, were Troschu, Acme, Torrington Arena, and the Three Hills Community Center. The only one that's central?
It's Three Hills.
Is Three Hills, that's right. And so, you know.
We already got that one booked for our September.
Yeah. So I'm, I was just thinking that we go north and we go south. And if we went to Carbon as opposed to Acme, I'm good with that. But really, on the north end, it's Troschu or Torrington. Torrington is even more marginalized than Troschu, so, in terms of close to the boundaries. So that's why I picked those two locations. I'm open to suggestions otherwise. I'm open to suggestions otherwise.
Councilor McGee?
I'm quite attached to the suggestions of Trosu and Acme. I find with, between the long table covering some of that south, and Three Hills having an event added already, I think we're, Acme is especially a good choice, in my mind.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have a motion before us to hold two. One in Trosu, one in Acme. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. So, we will be holding two, one in Acme and one in Trosu. Dates will be determined by staff, I hope.
Yep. We can look into that. That actually works very well, because then we can make sure the venues are available.
We'll try to have one here, first part of August, I take it. And what's council's wishes? After harvest, well, that's a pretty big window. So... Sometime in November?
Fay wants to have a Thanksgiving turkey barbecue.
Perfect.
Okay, so, direction has been shown?
It's only a suggestion.
Okay.
It's not a requirement.
Okay. I'll see what I can do.
Okay, well, that, I think, gives staff enough direction. So, thanks Christine, and good luck.
Thank you. It's gonna be so much fun.
Okay, so, one in August and one sometime end of October or November. Or vice versa? Okay, we will go on to 8.3, David Thompson Health Advisory Municipal Forum. Mr. Hogan, you're gonna take this one?
That I will. So, this is, this topic is just one that council receives from time to time in terms of there's an event going on. If council would like to have somebody attend, just looking through our process of having that attendance approved, and somebody then going. So, what we're looking for here is if council decides that you want to participate, who's that person gonna be, and authorizing their attendance to do so.
I guess right off the bat, I'd have to state that I'm not available for the June 20th meeting. That being stated, what's council's wishes?
I guess I would have a question. Is this one of those provincial things where they invite you to come, and their minds are made up, and they solicit your opinions, and then say, "Well, you told us this, and so, we're going with it, and it's what they had already intended"? Is there value in attending this, I guess is my question?
The answer to that, Councilor King, I don't know. You know, when the invite came out, you know, the depth to which information's gonna be shared, or they're looking back, we don't know the answer to that. So, I don't, you know, what we get is that there's a combination of information about things that the province is gonna be doing, and, you know, the exact nature of what input they're looking back on, we're not certain.
I guess it might be an opportunity to see if there's a change in focus from the province since the most recent election, and whether there's kind of an alteration in the direction they're going.
Councilor McGee?
I've noticed that they've been trying to engage Albertans around this by asking them to be part of the council, to be part of, I mean, not their, their advisory council, as well as surveys have been out too. So, I'm quite optimistic that there is some opportunity to be heard, as well as to kind of understand where they're coming from, and how that will affect our community.
So, I guess my question then, to follow that up, would be, are you available to attend on the 20th, if Reeve Whitstock is not?
I would be available, yes.
Okay, I think it'd be valuable to attend, just to see if there is, or what direction there is, or whether or not they even have a direction. But I think missing it, we wouldn't have a clue one way or the other, so I think it'd be valuable to attend. And Councilor McGee, you've made it known that you could attend. Is there someone that would be willing to make a motion? Councilor King?
I'd make the motion, then, that we approve Deputy Reeve McGee's attendance to the David Thompson Health Advisory Council Municipal Forum being held in Hannah on Thursday, June 20th, 2019.
Okay, thank you, and we have that motion on the board. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Well, have fun, Councilor McGee.
Thank you.
And I see we have a delegation coming before us at 9:30. I think I saw Shelley walking by, so she'll probably have a little bit of stuff to get ready here, and been requested to go for, on a break, so I will call a break and be back in session at 9:30. Thanks.
Welcome Shelley Jackson-Berry. And any, well, I think everyone here knows you and yeah, I think you know everyone here. So anytime you're ready Shelley, we look forward to your report.
Thank you very much and Reeve Woodstock and thank you Carolyn for following along with my rambling. As I just said to Counselor King, I have trouble, I have to talk with my hands, so doing things with them, it won't be effective. So, thank you very much for your time and I will do my best to be quick, because who am I kidding? I will try to be quick, but that sometimes is a struggle for me, as the Lyndon people in the audience know as well. Anyway, so the report you have before you is our 2018 report and that was our 20th year of operation. So it was as a regional program. The town of Three Hills had an FCSS program before that and you guys, all the other municipalities were putting partial funding together for the family resource worker program before that. But as a regional program where you accessed full funding, the, yes, this was the 20th anniversary of that. So, so as you know from the report, the Neheel Regional FCSS is a partnership between the Alberta government and the municipality. So the municipalities must put in a minimum of 20% to access the grant from the, from the province. And our municipalities put in a spigian more than that, or actually they usually put in a little bit more than that, but this year it was 21.7%. Came from the municipalities with the other 78.3 coming from, from the province. So FCSS across the province are, they're very unique and so they're to meet community needs as you know. So that's a, I think that that's very effective, but that sometimes makes it hard to put FCSS in a box. Because what happens in the Neheel area can be very different than what happens in Drumheller, over in Oals, or in Calgary. So, but the bonus is, is we're able to meet local needs, which I think is more effective than having a blanket come for a larger area that says, thou shalt address these issues around the social initiatives. So comparing to 2017, I, externally, the, the board funded about the same amount of money. Individuals were down a little bit, as you can see in the report. This year, the programs we either directly delivered or those that we funded hit 5,857 individuals throughout the area. Our number of volunteers was up by 13%, so this year that's 246 volunteers who contributed just over 11,000 hours. So that is a huge benefit and we know that that value is huge financially, as we put the number there. But we know that that contributes to wellness, wellbeing of individuals and community when people are engaged in their communities. And, is it the next page? We'll just do this in the next page order. So this, this graph just gives you an idea of what the board, so when I just, that first page was just about fam, FC, Neheel Regional FCSS funding. That is truly just the municipal money and the provincial money. This graph at the top here, this one is of all the other programs that the FCSS board manages. So grants that we access. So the Community Building Initiative, Golden Prairie Parent Link. And so that is one program that it serves zero to six-year-olds and their families. And that we hold that contract for the Neheel area, Starland County, Drumheller, and Hannah. So we hold that contract for a larger area. But the board investing my time in administering that program has benefited our community because we've been able to reduce the funding that we've needed to put into that age range. And we have much better service because we're able to access a lot more funding to support the, those children and families. So, so those are the sorts of things. The Neheel Community Resource Program, so that's the family resource workers in the school system. And Neheel Regional FCSS Board puts in the majority of that money, but the number up there is money that we access from Central Alberta Child and Family Services, as well as Golden Hill School Division. And then we have donations and other money. So if we run a program where there's a registration fee that fits into there and then donations for the Neheel Tools for School program, things like that are in that last section there. So then back to the graph underneath there is specifically for the FCSS, the municipal funding and the provincial funding. When we, when the board reports to the province, these are the main categories they're looking at, just to get an idea of what kind of money that they're spending on the percentages. So the percentages really the last number of years have been very similar to what you see there. With majority of the funding going to seniors and then children, youth, and families is where we spend most of the money. So one of the areas, on the next section, you'll see some numbers about our Community Volunteer Income Tax Program. I don't know if I've talked about this one in the past, but this is a program that we have been running since 2002, where it's volunteers who assist people who are low income, who have a basic income tax return and getting that completed. So what we started to do is kind of measure, this is connected to what we call poverty reduction. Because we know that there is a tendency when people have a lower income and don't know how to fill out their own income tax, that they don't do it. Well, that really has a huge impact, they don't access a number of their rebates, GST refunds, they wouldn't be able to access those. And then a lot of times it might affect if they need to move into public housing or something like that. The only way you can get in there is having a copy of your last year's tax return. So it impacts the programs and services they can access as well as the rebates. So this graph or this picture is just showing you that in 2008, 18, sorry, which would have affected the 2017 tax return, 202 tax returns were completed. And then we just kept a number of the credits or refunds that came back to our Neheel area residents because of the work our volunteers did. And that was close to $227,000. So just showing that, and I think that that's valuable for our volunteers. Some of these volunteers end up doing 30, 40 tax returns for our area residents and showing them the value that they're bringing back to our area residents, but making a huge difference for our residents to make sure that they are accessing all their credits and benefits. So that's one of the things that we're doing around poverty reduction and, because that's one of the first thing that we ask when people walk in. We, FCSS programs are not allowed to provide direct funding to individuals. That's not part of our mandate, Alberta government deals with that, so we do a lot of referring around that. But these are some of the questions we ask to support them. Have you completed your tax returns? And so a lot of times we'll have people who say they haven't completed their taxes for the last 10 years. So we have an amazing volunteer in Carbon and he's my, he's our go-to guy. And he has a lot of those programs still on his computer and he is able to get those done to try and get people caught up. So those are just some of the things that we do. The other thing that we did last year, which was kind of new, is we tried to connect with, excuse me, the regional food banks. Because we cover an interesting area that, well, as you guys know, we have different areas for, for the RCMP and so victim services, all those sorts of things. One of the ones is the food banks. We have, you know, a number of them and then parts of our area might be covered of oils and somewhat of Drumheller. So we just tried to, we had a request from some of the food bank to talk about who they serve, what it looks like, any issues they're running into. So we hosted kind of a regional meeting to connect with people about, about those things and what are their issues and concerns. So one of the things, excuse me, we were able to do is Angie created a nice little short one-pager. Just making sure that people, if it was a family, make sure that your acts, you know, make sure you know about these resources, whether that be our birthday in a box program, or tools for school, or kids' sport, some of those sorts of things that we do and making sure that they know about the other provincial resources that are available. So hopefully that is helping people get more connected to services and supports sooner. So those are some of the things we're doing around that. One of the other things on this page just to mention is the Tools for School program. So in 2018, we can, we filled 52 backpacks for area residents. And this was over a 115% increase over 2017 where we only completed 26, which tends to be where we tend to sit, is that 26 to 30? So I, I, I can't tell you an answer for that. I don't know why we seen such a huge increase last year and we'll see if that was a blip in the system. But all of those people are usually either referred by people to the program, you know, where we have a conversation about kind of what barriers they're having financially. So we don't just give them out willy-nilly, so interesting to see what's happening. Our family marriage counselor did say that certainly a number, he was seeing an increase that the main issue was not always finances, but over the last year, would have been 2018, that finances were, financial stress was something that was impacting a majority of the families that he was working with. So it is an underlying issue for sure. The next page, Carolyn, the next two pages are just around our outcomes. So everything I kind of talked about right just now were outputs. So we can look at the numbers and the number of individuals. But the thing that we also were focusing on in our area, as well as provincially, is looking at so what? So what are the benefits, what's different for people because they have connected or access to our services or supports? So the benchmark we use to, to feel that we actually achieved our outcome is 80%. And if you have a quick look, we kind of break them down to increase or have positive outcomes for individuals, for families and for community, because those would be the three areas that we focus on. And if you have a quick look through those, you'll see that everything in 2018 was definitely, it was actually higher than 90%. So, so yeah, I think that we've got some pretty solid programs that are being delivered in this Neheel area, whether it's being delivered by us or things that the FCSS board funds. And so that, that's important, but then I just always have to throw in, you guys are very fortunate to have some amazing staff here who are very passionate. Some of them around, have been around for a long time and they're very passionate about supporting area residents and seem to really understand that preventive end, to try and get and support, to support people before there's a crisis. So I think that that also speaks a bit, some solid programs, but some amazing staff who are very dedicated to supporting your area residents. Do I have a few, I have a few seconds, so I'm, I am just going to toss in one other thing that the FCSS board spent 2018 working on. So in their, oh, I can't remember the year. So the last strategic plan that the board did, let's go with that. One of the areas that they wanted to focus on is increasing volunteerism. Because again, we know the huge positive impact that has for community, one, but that it has for individuals as well. I'm presently teaching a course on, called Fountain of Health. And again, social connection is huge and so we know the benefits to people's mental and physical health. So because of that, the board has been, how can we make sure that we're better connecting area people who, to volunteerism and the opportunities that are out there? So the board spent all of last year working on trying to create a website for the entire Neheel area. So we were very fortunate, we ended up with a donation from the Three Hills Cruise Night and from Inter Pipeline. And they have fully funded the development of the website. So during Volunteer Week, we kicked it off with our, the organizations, because we were stamping around Neheel County, trying to put on little celebrations for area volunteers. And so we were trying to get the opportunities, the organizations and the opportunities loaded onto the website. And then this is the month that you will see us doing a blitz to trying to get volunteers to pop onto the website. So it's just called Volunteer Neheel. And the organizations do a quick registration, then they can put their volunteer opportunities on there. And then volunteers don't go through us because we're not screening them. So then they directly are connected with the organizations who are in need and in need of support. We're also really trying to support our organizations that they're looking for small opportunities. One of the things through our office that we've been getting lots more phone calls about is groups of people, businesses, organizations, who are looking to do team building through a volunteer opportunity. And so we're trying to encourage organizations to access, or to access those sorts of opportunities before they ask them to become the chairperson of the board for the rest of their life. Because we find, again, we need to get people in, hooked in and, and then a lot of times they go, you know what? This is, you end up with one or two people who go, well, supporting youth this way is really important, you know, what else do you guys do? And we find that we work up to that. But the research says that if I show up and say, Counselor McGee, I need you to become the chairperson of this committee and we really don't even have a treasurer or secretary, because they've all laughed, that they go, oh, no, thank you, I'm busy right now. So trying to find ways to support organizations to slowly get people engaged. So I think I've probably ran out of time, but I did try and talk really fast.
Well, thanks Shelley. Does anyone have questions for Shelley while she's here?
My question on your volunteer value, is it too low?
I, I would say, yeah, we just pick minimum wage and certainly some of the opportunities that people are volunteering for. If, if you were paying for those, it would be much higher than that, but we just use minimum wage.
I guess my concern was you leaving some leverage on the window, on the table maybe a little bit. If the value was higher, it might give you more leverage, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah, yeah.
Just that was my only observation was, I thought it would, that many volunteer hours to me is worth more than $150,000.
Yeah, good, good point, we'll have a look at that. And I think that there's probably some research out there provincially around numbers to be using. And we just chose minimum wage, but you're right, I, we, you maybe do a little bit of research to say, what across the not-for-profit area are they using for that number? Thanks.
Is there any other questions for Shelley? Is there any other questions for Shelley? No, seeing as none, maybe you're off the hook. Thanks, thanks a lot for all the valuable work you do, and you've sure crammed a lot of information into your short time span. And I'm not saying you talk fast, I just listen fast. Okay, thanks Shelley.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming out and giving us the information on what you and your organization do for the people of Neheal County.
Talk about your enthusiastic staff, but certainly that's also shown by yourself, Shelley, and that's appreciated and acknowledged, so, thank you.
Well, we are 10 minutes away from a public hearing. Eight, eight, eight minutes. Sit down Shelley.
Talking to my neighbor.
Okay, as we have a public hearing coming up in 10 minutes, I will call a recess. That'll give our staff time to set up mics or... Okay, could someone make a motion to recess counsel? Counselor McGee?
I motion to recess counsel for a public hearing.
Okay, motion's been made to recess. All those in favor, carried. And at this time, I shall call for a motion that the public hearing for bylaw 1794 be opened at 10:04. Somebody want to make a motion? Counselor King?
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Open 10:04, all those in favor, carried. I have a few announcements I'm gonna go through here with the process. If any person interested in speaking for or against the proposed bylaw and haven't done so already, they should register their names on the appropriate speakers list so the names may be correctly recorded into the minutes. If you already have done, have not done so, please see Jenna Kester in the lobby to register your name on this list. The use of audio and video recording devices and cameras by the press or the public is prohibited. I would like now to introduce counsel, starting from my far right.
Hi, I'm Ken King, Counselor for Division 7.
Jim Hergel.
Wade Christie, Division 6.
Jerry Whitstock.
Fay McGee.
Glenn Keever.
Okay, thank you. Also seated with counsel is Mr. Mike Hogan, RCA O. I'll now outline the meeting process. Individuals speaking for or against the proposed bylaw today will be allowed five minutes to speak. A spokesman speaking on behalf of a group petition may speak for a maximum of 10 minutes. We have a time clock that will display on the screen. At two minutes, it'll turn yellow, one minute red, and when the clock hits zero, there will be a five-second warning that your speaking time is complete. All questions to counsel will be directed to myself as chair, and I will direct the question to the person best suited to answer. No questions will be taken from the gallery, no debate will be allowed. When presenting, speakers shall state their name and address. If you have already submitted a letter on or before the advertised date line, you may only address counsel at this hearing on new information not contained in that letter. Any person who would like to present using electronic presentation will bring their USB flash drive to the presenter's desk, where a staff member will open the file at the presenter's laptop. The order of presentations to be made by counsel today will be, first, administration will present an overview and summary regarding the proposed bylaw. Secondly, the applicant shall state their name and present their application within a time period of 20 minutes. Third, a member of counsel can ask questions of clarification to the applicant. Fourth, the chair shall open the floor to presentations from the public who are in favor of the proposed bylaw. The order for these presentations will be the following. Administration will come forward and read the written submissions. Individuals will be called in the order as they appear on the individual speakers list. Group speakers will be called in the order that they appear on the group speakers list. Fifthly, the chair shall open the floor to presentations from the public who are opposed to the proposed bylaw. The order for these presentations will be in the following order. Administration will come forward and read the written submissions. Individuals will call in the order as they appear on the individual speakers list. Group speakers will be called in the order they appear on the group speakers list. Counsel members are allowed to ask questions of clarification to the individuals and groups speaking to the proposed bylaw. Sixthly, after the hearing from those, excuse me, after hearing from those persons on the speakers list and support or opposition, I will ask if anyone present wishes to speak and support or opposition to the proposed bylaw. Seventh, the applicant will get a chance for rebuttal which will be no longer than 10 minutes. Eighth, we'll allow questions for clarification from counsel members to the applicant. I will now ask our Planning and Development Department to come forward to make their presentation. Welcome, Barb.
Good morning again, Mr. Reeve and members of council. We are here today for the public hearing for Brian and Kathy Corgel, and so I just want to go through some slides here. As required by the Municipal Government Act, Section 606, notifications were done to adjacent landowners and referral agencies, and on our website, and that we were also advertised three times in the Three Hills Capitol. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider the redesignation of approximately 300 meters square, plus or minus within a portion of the northwest of 30, 33, 26 west of 4, from Agriculture District to Direct Control District for cannabis, microcultivations, processing, and federal medical sales. The owners of the identified property, Brian and Kathy Corgel, operating under the corporate entity of BK Outdoor Buds, Inc., are in the process of the federal license application for operations of a microcultivation processing and federal medical sales of cannabis. A microcultivation is limited to 200 meters square, which is 2,152 square feet in size. A federal license is issued by Health Canada. Applicants are also obligated to meet local zoning and permitting requirements. Summary of the location, so they are approximately four miles west of Wimbourn, a half mile north of Township Road 334. Access to the property is by Range Road 270. Private sewer services are required by the developer, and there's no water line in that area, so they will be providing all of that. The applicants have identified, as you see on the drawing, 300-meter area of land for the redesignation. This allows them 200 meters for cultivation and an additional area for processing. Cultivation and processing will not be outdoors. Under the municipal development plan, there are economic goals listed, and that is to create opportunities that will provide a variety of development options, that will diversify and strengthen the county's economy, to create a positive and competitive business environment, and to ensure all appropriate development standards are achieved. Land use bylaw definition, so cannabis, and again, a lot of this was taken out of the Act, it means a cannabis plant, any part of a cannabis plant, including the phytocannabinoids produced by, don't make me say that twice, or found in such a plant regardless of whether that part has been processed or not, other than a part of the plant referred to that falls under Schedule 2 of the Cannabis Act. Any substance or mixture of substance that contain or has on it any part of such a plant, any substance that is identical to any photocannabinoid produced by or found in such a plant regardless of how the substance was obtained. In the land use bylaw continued, Direct Control District 6 is to provide for the development of land uses under individually unique circumstances, requiring site-specific controls where the application of conventional land use districts would be inappropriate or inadequate. All cannabis retail sales and cannabis recreation production facilities will be required to redesignate the property to Direct Control District. re-designate the property to Direct Control District. If we are dealing strictly with a medical, just for information, they are required to go Industrial District. If successful in redesignation, the details and specific conditions required for the development will be dealt with through the Direct Control District Development Permit process. Counsel shall specify those uses that may be allowed, and counsel shall establish the development standards that apply, and you will note that there are some listed ones in the bylaw that has been attached to your package, and that's based on, these Direct Control Districts are built specifically for the applicant, and they are based on what that applicant is choosing to do. Under medical cannabis facility, production facilities, again, in our land use bylaw, those are considered under the Industrial District, and they have to operate only under applicable federal licensing. They need to provide, to provide proof of valid licensing and activities as approved shall be provided to the development authority. And again, some of the things, and a lot of these would be dealt with through the development permit stage, but the odor, smoke, or airborne particles inherent to the nature of operations shall be determinable, not be determinable beyond the legal boundaries of the parcel. No, an applicant shall demonstrate the ability to comply with municipal water allotments or prove a licensed source of water. The development authority may oppose the following conditions pertaining to a medical cannabis production facility, delivery route requirements, location of access to the lands, provision of a waste management plan, all garbage containers and waste material shall be fully enclosed within the building, and again, those are things that would be dealt with through development. On the retail recreational side, again, they have to be re-designated to Direct Control District, they do have to provide their licensing that they would have to get through the feds. A development permit shall be required for all cannabis retail and cannabis recreational production and sales facilities. Cannabis recreation production and retail sales facilities shall operate only under applicable federal and provincial licensing. Proof of valid federal and provincial licensing and the activities as approved hereunder shall be provided to the development authority, and again, all garbage and waste has to be contained in the building, and a security plan must be provided and acceptable by the county. These are very unique, this is our first one in the door, so we're all kind of trying to sort out where the lines are because it is a multi-jurisdictional application, so, and I just want to clarify, and I want to go through a few things on the Health Canada requirements, all of the applicants have to go through Health Canada for the licensing, no matter what their end goal is, they need that license. If they are going to do retail in Alberta, they do have to get a license under the AGLC, which is the Alberta Gaming and Liquor Commission, which has got cannabis added to that as well now, so they have to go through that process as well, so it really depends what their final output is, what they need to do, but I thought I would use this opportunity to just give you a little bit of the regulations out of the Fed, Health Canada federal, federal government requirements. So for a micro cultivation, which is what we're looking at today, it allows the license holder to produce dried fresh plants and seeds. Under micro processing, it allows the license holder to manufacture cannabis products, and to sell cannabis for medical purposes, they can sell cannabis to registered clients. Applications will only be processed once both the document portion and the site evidence package has been submitted, and we'll talk a little bit more about those. So there is an application screening process, that is a thirty day service standard for what they do. There is a review and security clearance required, secure, security clearance is required for all key personnel and employees, so they all have to individually have a background check. Pre-licensing and approval process, onsite pre-licensing inspection by Health Canada inspectors may be deemed necessary prior to licensing, and then they have the issuance of the license, initially it's a graduated license in order to verify products meet quality standard. Continuing with some of the specific requirements, a security clearance is required for all directors, officers, partners, license holders, responsible persons, head of security, master grower, and the quality assurance person, so all of them have to go through the security clearance. The site detail requirements, they need the Latin long of the site, the real property report, they need a current five hundred meter scale aerial image, their estimated production, each indoor area must be named and the activities identified, and that has to be consistent through all the information that they provide. Qualifications for quality assurance, they do have to have that person that is qualified, and they have to show that, so, and some of the things under their umbrella would be pest control, storage, shipping, air filtration, equipment sanitation, hygiene, product quality, microbiome, chemical contaminants, cannabinoid content, and sample collection, et cetera. They do have to provide notice to local authorities, so they are required to give notice to the local government, local fire and local police or RCMP. They also have to provide an organizational security plan, so that is the head of security, their business plan, site organizational chart, individuals in key positions, the cannabis tracking, security awareness and training, and standard operating procedure. On top of that, they are required to do physical security requirements, so they have to do guided video tour highlight to the entire, of the, highlighting the entire site perimeter and all storage areas, the entire physical barrier for the site, photographic overview, prevention of unauthorized access, materials used in construction of physical barriers and restricted access. So again, that is something that has to be submitted with their application, so they will have to have some of that in place. And then there is a whole area of the regulations that talk about good production practices, and again, those key areas under that are the storage areas, how the storage procedures are laid out, process flow, air filtration systems, water supply source, water quality testing, and sanitation program. And then they have to do record keeping as well, so the medical client registration information, if they are providing for medical use, filling of orders, refusal to fill orders, they have to document all of those things, medical documents provided by the clients, medical practitioner verification process, and quantity distributed. And again, I just thought I would share some of the fees under their structure, so for standard or micro, this is the federal fees, and again, they are quite high for somebody to go through this process. There is an annual regulatory fee, what we've put here is the minimum required depending on whether you're a micro or a standard, but what they do, if you are below the minimum, you have to meet the minimum, but otherwise, it's based on your revenue, so if you are a standard, the regulatory fee is two point three percent of your revenue, and if you are a micro, it's one percent under a million and two point three over a million, so just to give you some idea of the federal process that they are going through concurrently with ours. Just a few site photos, so again, this is a smaller partial, parcel of land, so it's three, just over three acres, and then we have got some pictures facing north, just the back area, and that's along the fence line that will, the triangle fence line that runs northwest to southeast, so that's just along that fence line there, and then that's the area where some of the planners are standing is the proposed location, this is just their garden set up right now. And then we do, did receive some letters in opposition, so the green star is the operation location, and then the opposition letters are from owners of the following lands. So one of the things I want to clarify, we will come back and we will read in the order as per required, but originally, the public hearing was scheduled for April twenty-third, however, it was postponed due to amendments to the site plan, so the first four letters that were received were received without initial circulation of the application. We are going to read them into the record as likely those parties assumed they had submitted, so we've received one with a second circulation, so I just wanted to clarify that because this one did have two circulations, so, and that is my presentation.
Don't go away, Barb.
Oh, sorry.
Does counsel have any questions for the planner? Maybe I was premature, Barb. Okay, I guess you can go away.
Thank you.
I'll now ask the applicant to come forward to make your presentation.
I'm a little unaware of the processes, so I don't really have a presentation per se. I would like to clarify a couple of things that I just heard, one of them being that sales is not something we are part of, in the sense of we can sell strictly to the Alberta government through the procurement site, or we can, we can sell through federal medical sales. We cannot sell to the public, we can't sell to anybody, nobody can come down the road, nobody can come into our site, nobody, there is no store per se, it is nothing like that. The other thing I want to make really clear to everyone is that the intent of the whole process is not a full-on micro operation, which would go year-round, the intent of this was to do a summer grow operation once per year. Now, in the initial stages of the, of the process, the intent was to do outdoor grow. It was to grow a natural product free of pesticides, free of hormones and other applications. It was a very simple operation in a, in an area that resembles, well, it's actually smaller than what we grow in potatoes. It's, it's a very small section of land, piece of parcel of land that would allow for a crop to be started in somewhere in April, be harvested somewhere in September, that would be it. And so we're, we're quite a bit different than what maybe you might be perceiving in the sense of full-on operation, annual growing of three or four seasons of growth, this kind of thing. It's not our intent, and the, the truth of the matter is, is the parcel of land wouldn't, wouldn't allow it. To do a full-on micro grow operation, you would probably need in excess of five thousand square feet, because you'd need to have separation, you'd have to have an area where you could actually start seeds from growing, you'd have to move it into a, an area where you could actually vegetative growth, and then you'd move it to another area where you have flowering operations, and then you'd have to have another area for processing, it's a very, you know, from a micro standard, it is a larger operation than what our intent is and what our size allows us to do. So if that helps explain our intent maybe a little bit, I don't know, I think that's about all I can really say, unless you have a lot of questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from counsel?
Thanks very much.
Doesn't look, thank you. And I will now ask administration to come forward to read the written submissions that are in favor of the proposed bylaw, but I see there were none, so I had to say that anyway. And now I will call on individuals in the order they appear on the individual speakers list in favor of the bylaw to come forward to make your presentation. I'll remind you that you have five minutes to speak. On my list here, I have, the first one is Bondar Hanson. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. We are Bonner and Sandra Hanson, we're right adjacent to the south side of this property. And first off, my question is, as far as I can tell, hemp is listed as an agricultural Now, having said that, as we have done with so many things, we've turned it into something that is more than seed and fiber, and we now have a crop that certainly does have to have some controls on, does it not? But I'm not willing to say whether, whether we should have this or we shouldn't have this. I, I think that as our counties look for ways of expanding past agriculture, which sometimes agriculture seems to think that because we were here first, that nothing else should be here, but I know from past experience, and I'm getting to enough age that I realize that, that we need lots of other, and we lived with the oil industry and lots of other developments as they go along. So I, I'm willing, or we are willing to agree with whatever counsel comes up with. Now, I expect counsel to do their homework, and I think that as it was mounted, that this is the first time around, it is going to be kind of a guessing game to make sure that all the questions are answered, and I, and I can just throw out another one, okay, if there's a fire, do I run to help or do I run the other way? Is this a permanent designation? In other words, now that it has been designated for this, can that then be sold to another person? Of course, they'd have to have their license to, to grow this, but does that mean then that this could go down the line or could be rented to somebody that has that designation or has that license to, to grow cannabis? What happens, and we know this from, from our long years with the oil industry, what happens when this is decided to be shut down? We have, you know, is there a direct process as what, to what happens, or is it, is it very simple to, to shut this down? Something that I think that we need to address as we go along. I know counsel is, is serious about, about thinking about this, and one of the things that sort of bothers me, and sort of bothers Sandra and I, is that things like this can certainly divide a community, and we really don't want that to happen. So I think somehow, and I don't know how it would be, that we need some kind of disclosure to residents around and, and other people, we certainly don't have parades to the, to the site or anything like that, but just information of, of how it's going and what's happening, and the, the old word was gossip, but the new word is what, fake news, you know, those kinds of things come out, and, but we need to have proper information of to what's going on and how things are happening. I wish the counsel all the best in, in making their decision on this matter. Do I stay here for questions?
I will ask if counsel has any questions for you, Bonner.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Okay, you're, you're off the hook.
Okay.
Our next speaker that's registered is Brian Corgel.
That's me.
Yeah, you have, you're registered here, so I'm just asking if you'd want to come ahead. If not, our next speaker after you is Kathy. You have anything to add?
No, I think he's, it is.
All right. Thank you very much. Now I will call on individuals speaking as a group in order they appear on the group list in favor of the bylaw to come forward to make your presentation, and I have no one here, so I'll skip on to the next. I will now call upon administration to come forward to read the written submissions that are in opposition to the proposed bylaw.
Thank you again. So the first two letters are the exact same letter, I'm only going to read it once, there's different names on the bottom, and you can have them in your package so you can see that, but it is from the colony. So, dear counselors, regarding the application by Brian and Kathy Corgel to have their land re-designated from Agriculture District to Direct Control District Six for a micro outdoor cannabis operation, this letter is to say that Valley View Colony is against the redesignation of this land for a cannabis operation. This application is for an outdoor grow operation, and seeds from it can spread to our pastures and cultivated lands. Security will be difficult to maintain in this area, such as increased potential for crime due to people trying to get at the outdoor grow up. There will be more garbage to clean up in the ditches and fields from the increased traffic. The members of the colony are concerned about the younger members being exposed to cannabis drug operation in this agricultural area. We have been in this area for a very long time in the agricultural business of growing food and raising animals for food, it is zoned agricultural. If you allow this rezoning for cannabis operations, there will be no stopping of these operations popping up all over the agricultural areas. Please do the right thing for agriculture. And again, we have that letter was submitted a second time with different signatures. The third letter we received was from Robert Friesen. In regard to the notice of intent to establish an outdoor micro cannabis operation on the northwest of thirty, thirty-three to twenty-six west of four, as an adjacent landowner, I object to the redesignation of the land as well as the development of this business. I believe the safety of our rural community will be compromised. The increase in The increase in rural crime is of great concern to me, and I feel this will increase the exposure of our area to more unwanted attention. This business will increase traffic, therefore disturbing the peacefulness of rural life. I am also concerned about the devaluing of surrounding farmland and acreages. I hope you will consider the detrimental ramifications of this development we'll have on our community. The fourth letter we received was a different one from Valley View Colony. Um in regard to the notice of intent to establish an outdoor micro cannabis operation on the northwest of thirty, thirty-three, twenty-six, west of four, we object to re-designation as well as the development of this business. We believe the safety of our rural community will be compromised. The increase in rural crime is of great concern to us, and we feel this will attract unwanted exposure. This business will attract increased traffic, therefore disturbing the peacefulness of rural living. We are also concerned for the exposure and increased availability of cannabis to the future generations in this area. We hope you will consider the ramifications of this development we'll have on our community. We totally object to cannabis operation. And the fifth letter that we received was from Dennis Klein. Regarding the application by Brian and Kathy to amend the land use bylaw, this letter is to say that I am against the re-designation of this land for cannabis operation. I do not like cannabis being grown in this family farm community. Safety and security will be tested due to the distance from RCMP. This operation should be near a town or city for security and quick response time from law enforcement. I've been farming in this area for a very long time. This area is zoned agricultural. If you allow this rezoning for cannabis operation, there will be no stopping these operations from happening all over the agricultural areas. Please do the right thing for the residents of Neill County. Another letter I just wanted to comment on, it's in your package, Alberta Health Services, and we just got this one, so it didn't make it into um the stuff. Most of the agencies had no concerns. Um Alberta Health Services did list several um things that they had wanted to be sure that were considered. So again, and I will just, I won't read it word for word, but I'll just highlight what they talked about, and a lot of this will be dealt with through other things, but adequate potable water supply, uh types and volume of chemicals such as pesticide solvents, cleaning products that will be stored on site. Chemicals and hazardous materials must be handled appropriately appropriately so to not contaminate cannabis products. A waste management plan for the operation should specify the type of waste and volume of waste material and the manner which it will be handled. Construction materials to facilitate sanitary maintenance, for example, building materials for walls should be smooth and permeable and easy to clean. Prevent mold growth with control of heat and humidity level levels in the growing environment. HVAC system requirements and queries should be referred to safety codes inspectors. Implement implement odor mitigation strategies to ensure the odors from the proposed facility are controlled. Uh consider installing monitors to assist in maintaining carbon monoxide levels. And um then they have their information for consultation in that one. Other than that, all the other agencies had no concerns.
Okay, thanks, Verne. I will now call on individuals in the order they appear on the individual speakers list in opposition to come forward to make their presentations. And I have none that are individuals. I will now call on individuals in the order they appear on the group list in opposition to the bylaw to come forward to make your presentation. And I have two here on the group list, Vern and Susan Didik, Didik?
Didik.
Sorry?
That's okay, you said it. Anyway, if I fall out of this because I'm getting nervous, I'll just turn it right over to her because I've.
Well, you're lucky I don't have that option.
Been been a while, yeah, that too. Anyway, our names are Vern Didik and Susan Didik. And uh we're 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 the uh landowners rate rate, there's only a barbed wire dividing us. I raise cattle in the area. I put a barbed wire fence up between him and me. And uh uh if people wanted to get out the cannabis, all they have to do is cut the barbed wire on my side because there's a tree line, and they can sneak through the trees to get in over to it. And uh uh I talked to a veterinarian about if this cannabis, you know, the the leftover product thrown out or whatever, if they ingested it, pregnant cows, what would happen to them? They have no knowledge of what it what it would do to them. The waste product, he told me, he said he was going to burn it. And uh anybody with medical problems, which we have in our family, is asthma. Uh and not good for you. And uh in a fabric greenhouse, uh seeds can escape, uh yeah, go ahead, Sue, you take it. I knew what it was gonna.
Okay, so um if these plants are grown in a fabric greenhouse, seeds can escape when the plants are transported from one building to another. Commercial facility operations are inside. There's no walking and carrying plants outside. A fabric greenhouse surrounded by chain link fence and lock gate will be low security. It's easy to cut the chain link fence to get to the cannabis. If you're cutting the barbed wire fence, the chain link is next. Uh there'll be a bad smell and gases when the plants are growing and ripening. Fabric greenhouses are not a sealed unit. Doors and window flaps will have to be open preventing and heat to escape. This type of property, this type of operation will lower property values. Uh we talked to Realtor, and it will lower the price of adjoining properties as a cannabis grow operation has to be disclosed when you're selling a property. This will increase traffic uh along on a low volume gravel road, for example, government inspectors. Increased traffic can lead to vandalism and farm break-ins, which we've already had. Other cannabis operations are in hard covered sealed, secure buildings or greenhouses, preventing seeds, plants and odors from spreading. The size of this operation will not help in the medical business. So in a conversation with an RCMP constable, he said this operation is too far away for adequate emergency response time. And he said it seems to be in the wrong location. It should be in an industrial area near a town or city for maximum security and quicker police response time. Okay, so um. Uh we we did put a sign up on private property informing people who travel on Range Road thirty-four zero of the upcoming application, okay? And the signs were defaced or torn down. Uh speaking with the RCMP and and reading him the sign, uh he says there was perfectly legal to put it up. You're informing the people because not everyone reads the little, you know, forms in that the Neill announcements in the paper. I just want.
I I just want to add, there's some other stuff that which you counselors should know about. Uh when when the sign was uh knocked down and we put it back up, uh when I was leaving the house again to go out again, uh Brian parked his vehicle right in the middle of the road, and there's no way I can get by him. Uh he came up to my vehicle and uh and said he didn't like the sign. Uh he's he sprayed the sign with black paint. He uh he asked me, who put the sign up? He said to me, stand up and be a man. I said, uh I have nothing to say to him. I just wanted to get away from that. And so I had to drive partially in the ditch with my vehicle to get around his vehicle because I didn't want to have no part of what was going on. Anyway, new signs were put up. They were torn down three times. We finally caught who was tearing them down. Uh his name is Cam Com. He lives to the north of us. He owns the quarter north of us. Uh I had a talk, a discussion with him uh about tearing down signs on private property, which he had no right to go on there. Uh he said, he he I said I am going to put the signs back up again. He walked towards me on the road and said, uh, I should give you a good beating. I uh I drove through the gates at our home, and uh he parked outside the gates. I I went in the house, I called the RCMP, I reported the neighbor, Cam, uh threatening me and tearing down signs on private property. The RCMP said to me on the phone, they would have a talk with him about the threat of assault uh and trespassing and vandalism. Uh the application has not yet been a been approved. And and look, it is what is what has already happened. Vandalism, trespassing, and threat, uh threat of assault. Uh there were no such problems before this. Uh my closing is, counselors, it is in your hands to do the right thing for farmers and agriculture community in our county. Say no.
Okay, I just have a little bit here. Uh Redier County has updated their land use bylaw, and their regulations require medical cannabis production facilities to be located in industrial or business reports. And this was quoted from Central Alberta Life newspaper dated May second, twenty nineteen. So I talked to a member of the Redier Planning and Development Department. Medical cannabis operations are not allowed on agricultural land. They are to be located in industrial areas close to fire and police services. And the cannabis operation uh in Oles has had two fires since December, uh twenty eighteen. So what I'm saying is, there's the fire close to fire services. If you have a fire in the country, it's a long response time. And uh the other thing that I read in in Central Alberta Life newspaper, May thirtieth, is rural crime in Alberta is thirty-six to forty-two percent higher compared to urban areas. And that was from twenty seventeen. So we're we're concerned about crime, right? And and there's the proof that it's gone up a lot, and and there's no adequate response time. If if you have a crime in the country, they come after, right? They can't come to you. So my closing is, Neill County, please take a hard look at the impact to the communities in our county before considering to approve this application. This could set a precedent, and there will be cannabis production facilities all over the county. There could be no stopping it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh are there any questions from council to the presenters? I actually have one question. Well, I think it's one question. How far is your residence from the proposed location?
Quarter mile.
Quarter of a mile?
Not even a quarter of a mile.
Not even a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
If you have your, uh if it was up, you know, our, it's out of the same quarter, there's three acres. It was cut out of there. And uh our home is not very far away from this.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, I will now ask one final, oh yeah, one final time if there is anyone else present who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of the proposed bylaw. And we don't have any letters that are either, okay, we do not. Okay, we are going on to number twelve. Does the applicant wish to offer a rebuttal? I remind you, you have ten minutes for your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to address a couple of the issues that I just heard. I'll start with the issue between Mr. Didik and the neighbor to his north. This has been an ongoing thing a lot longer than before we even moved there. The issue started long before we even came into the area. I don't know exactly what the issues all started from. I believe, from what I understand, some of the issues started from the building of the road of two seventy. He is a a property owner uh to the north of that piece of property. He does not live on that property. He lives in Aridri. And I I I can't speak other than that. I wish he he was here right now. Uh maybe he could he could discuss some of that issue. But so to say that this all started because of the application is just in completely incorrect. Now, I'd like to address the signage issue. The first sign that went up did not really belong, it wasn't on private property. It was on the corner of the of the Hutter Lake Colony sign. The second sign was moved on to private property. Now, that sign there had Kathy and Brian's name on it. It had, it was in fluorescent, uh yellow-green poster board. It had an arrow pointing to our property, and indicated that there was a three acre grow operation going on. Then he posted another sign to the north of our property, pointing an arrow back to our property. I I didn't even know about the sign until it was brought to my attention. I drove up, I looked at the sign, I drove back to my property. I got a can of black spray paint. I drove back up to the corner, and I removed our name off of it, the arrow and the three acre. As I was driving back to my property, I believe Mr. Vern Didik has got cam uh trail cams all through the edge of our property, um paying close attention to us. He drove back towards that site. I stopped at my front gate. I was not blocking the road. I was I was maybe maybe a little bit to the center right, where I stopped because I got to swing a little bit wider to get into my property. He came up, I got out, and I asked him, I said, you know, Vern, did you put up the sign? He said, no comment. I said, Vern, you know, we're neighbors. Can we can we sit down? Come in, come in, I'll pour you a cup of coffee, and Kathy will cut you a piece of pie. Let's discuss it, and maybe I can alleviate some of the concerns. No comment. He wouldn't have the comment. Uh then he went up and he posted another sign, and then I don't know what happened after that. I think there were some issues with with the gentleman from the north. But I think from conversation with Cam, this has been going on for a very long time. Now, with that said, we've been to the RCMP ourselves. My son-in-law is an RCMP. We've spoken to the Neill County bylaw officer, and all three of them indicated to us this is exactly where the RCMP want this operation to be. They want it away from the cities. They want it rural. They want it out of the way and not somewhere where it's people are driving by and seeing it all the time. My comment to Vern was, I didn't appreciate our names being put on their directions to our site, and I asked him if he would remove them. He didn't, I did. The issue really is 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 with the licensing process, there is nowhere where our address shows up. We have a box in Innisfield. We when we moved out to site, we didn't have anywhere where we could get mail delivery. In fact, to this date, they wouldn't even give us a postal code for our piece of property. We went and got a post office box in Innisfield. All the application for this process, it indicates box seven four zero two seven Innisfield, Alberta. So after this all dies down, if it goes through, the idea is is that nobody even knows where it is. And that's really what you want. Now, security, I think you have to understand how how this all works. You plant some seeds in April. You grow them throughout the summer. And sometime in the fall, you've got a window of opportunity of about two weeks that this plant has any significant value. So somebody wants to come on site and steal cannabis from from a greenhouse in our backyard, they better know exactly when to do it. The the idea is is that rural crime people are going after generators, chainsaws, hand tools. Cannabis stealing a a raw plant from somebody's greenhouse has very little value to anyone. So so timing is critical with that. I think that's about all I can say. I I I, yeah, I think that's about it, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
You know what, maybe can I, I've got four men.
Yep.
Can I say something else? I I think, you know, in response to to the things that have been said by Vern, is since the first uh letter application went out, we can no longer keep our windows closed, open. Um we are in an A-frame with a loft bedroom upstairs. We can't keep our windows open at night because Vern has now started playing his radio twenty-four seven at a level that we can't sleep. Um we can't have our grandchildren there because of some of the stuff that's going on. We can't have our grandchildren there, because of some of the stuff that's going on. The other day, we have him coming and standing at the property, taking pictures of us out in the yard, taking pictures of our property, driving his quad up and down. He all of a sudden decided that it was really important to remove a, a big section of trees between our property, giving him full view of our backyard. Drives his quad up there, the only time he can chainsaw the lumber is at five or six or 6:30 in the, in the evening, when we're sitting down to have our dinner. The music going so loud that we can't sit in our hot tub in a quiet evening. The reason we moved out to here is to have some peace, quiet, be left alone, and enjoy our life. Now, this has been completely destroyed. Now, what I'm, I'm wondering is, there is no noise bylaw in the Neale County. I, I can do nothing about it, other than perhaps I can go and spend a few, three, four, or $5,000 and put air conditioning in my house, close all my windows, and stay out of my yard. This has nothing to do with cannabis. This is an issue that's been going on with his neighbor for long before I got here. And in fact, his comment to me was, thank goodness, Brian, now he's got somebody else to pick on. Any questions?
Does council have any questions for the applicant? Counselor McGee.
Brian, could you clarify what your structure will, will be made of? Is it a fabric structure?
We, we haven't, we haven't even got to that point yet, because, to be honest with you, once I get, if I get the zoning, the next step is, is the whole federal application process. Now, the whole federal application process, if was designed perfectly, would be at least a year out. So if there's any mistakes or any questions on that application, it goes to the bottom of the pile, surfaces backed up again. So, so the idea was, is initially it was going to be an outdoor grow. I didn't want pesticides, I don't want fertilizers. We're composting, we're using compost from the Red Deer dump, because we can't get it any longer from Olds. So the whole idea was, is now, okay, what's plan B? Series of smaller greenhouses with, or one, one semi-large one? Haven't really got to that point yet. Now, now, you know, that whole process, so just a little background, I'm health and safety consultant. I, I audit for Core, I audit multiple companies, I build programs, but I also am an ISO auditor, so I'm quality control, and I've got extensive licensing experience for radioactive material and explosive operations. So I understand how difficult this whole process is going to be on the federal side. I know how tight security has to be, and I know how to do it. Any other questions?
Are there any other questions?
Oh, you can't.
Seems like none. Okay, thank you very much. I now declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to go back into regular council meeting. Counselor King?
So moot, then we go back to regular council.
Okay, motion's been made, all those in favor. And that is carried, and I will call a recess. Thank you, everyone, for coming in. Okay, I will bring council back to session. We are now going on to 9.1, in the disposition of delegate and public hearing business, and the Linden request for funding. Mike, are you taking? Mike, are you taking that?
So we have the official recommendation here would be from administration is not to fund. That being said, the, we've made that recommendation based on the fact that what we do, going back to that point of fairness among the urban, among the urban centers, is what we do and one we should be prepared to do and all, so we're not sure on the precedents around, around this. We've based that as well on previous discussions around whether it's a role of the county to fund infrastructure or what we define as core infrastructure within, within the urban centers. We've looked at other requests that we've, we've received and down that road have said, no, it's not necessarily our place to fund core infrastructure in other municipalities. That's the official recommendation, though that being said, should counsel choose to do this, there are places that you can, you can pull funding from, should you choose to do so. We'd also look at this in light of the type of request that it is. Conducting a master infrastructure plan is, from the grand scheme of things, is something that, that all municipalities should be doing. So if council does choose to, to provide funding, this is the type of program that we would say would have a lot of value to a municipality, would have a lot of value to, we believe, the village and possibly even to us in terms of knowing where, where the village was at and what, what may be coming down the road. So it's not necessarily a very specific infrastructure, like a specific pipe or road that's being done. It's a broader asset management and planning tool, which there is, there is quite a bit of value to, to what the village is moving forward with.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Is there any questions from counsel? I guess I have a comment. I think, I think it's important to have an idea on what long-term infrastructure needs look like. And I, I understand from even when we did our Hamlet's study, that it takes quite a bit of money to get that positioned. But that being said, it is one of the very important tools that we use to determine whether hamlets are viable, whether they're not viable, or whether or not what's next on the, on the list of things to do. I personally would, even though this isn't actually an infrastructure project, I find it would be valuable for, obviously, the village of Linden, but I think for Neale County also. But those are just my thoughts. Does anyone else have any comments? Or if no comments, is anyone willing to make a motion? Counselor King?
I guess I would, I would make a comment, and I certainly understand the reason for this request, and I certainly understand sort of the background related to even potential value for us. I guess I just want to remind myself and everyone else that, like Mike has already said, that if we spend a dollar here, we're probably spending five dollars here. If we approve this request for Linden, it, whatever money we spend here, we'll probably be spending in the other four urbans. And we need to be cognizant of that, not that I'm saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that we need to be aware of that. And like our small urbans, our funding too is not as plentiful as it used to be. And I think there are some serious questions that we need to be responding to within our own budgeting process. That said, I'm not opposed to us doing something here, but I just want us to be aware that it's not necessarily a Linden-only decision that we're making.
Glenn?
Our oil revenue issue, I think, is going to come to really weigh on us in the, in the not-too-distant future. And I'm hearing things going on in the oil patch that are going to affect us as personals. And so I don't want to be putting myself into a place where I have to pay an oil company some money, plus I have to pay here. There is going to be some real big crunch in this country, I think, very, very soon. And maybe this is the place to start crunching.
Well, I agree with you, Glenn, about the, the issues that we're going to have with the oil and gas industry in the county. I do suspect there's going to be a immense shift in assessment, the way we see it now. And yeah, I don't think it's going to look good for us until something should happen with the price of oil, and then I don't even know if that's going to make a whole lot of difference. But I leave it open for anyone else for comment. Counselor McGee?
I see this as, as, as I'm thinking about it, it's just growing and growing in my head because I really see the value in sustainability for, for the town, but also how that could affect us and our partnerships with you. I would like to make the motion that we defer this agenda item to another council meeting and take a look at some of our options in one of our council meetings.
Okay. Is there any com, I'll, I'll wait for the motion to come up on screen here. Is that the way you'd like to see the motion read, Counselor McGee?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor King?
Yeah, please. I guess I just wanted a little bit of clarity, in terms of what kind of information are we going to be asking our administration to bring to us at that time? Perhaps more information on what Glenn's referring to in terms of try to crystal ball where oil and gas are going in the future, I guess, and the impact if we get a request from all five communities? I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for a little more clarity.
Yeah, it's like you read my, my mind, exactly. I think we need to take a look at the budget and where, where, and if we even have funds to consider, and a little bit more thoroughly than we have in preparation for this, or at least than I have. And secondly, I would like to look at the bigger whole picture as far as how this would affect us and what we would have as intentions for all the other villages that may come forward. I think we need to make a regional plan as opposed to a one-off plan.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay. I know I've had communications with RMA and through various emails that I've received that it's not looking good for the future of the oil industry. There's, looks like about six or eight that'll be going broke here before the end of August and sounds like a dozen before December, just from the information that I've garnered out there. So I guess what we should probably do is find out how, if any of those will be affecting us and how they will be affecting us also. So it's probably a plan to look into the future a little bit and see what, what it is that we're looking at losing. Anyway, we have a motion in front of us. Counselor King?
Sorry, just as a follow-up. Do you want to try to set a more specific time rather than just some future date? I guess my question would be to administration more in terms of how, what kind of timeframe, Mike, do you see us requiring? Or perhaps administration requiring to come back with some information that would help us make this decision? Are we talking committee of the whole at what point in time, I guess?
Administratively, through your Mr. Chair, we don't, we don't need a lot of time on this. When we're talking about what are options, what is possible funding, things like that, we can, we can pull that together very quickly. Depending on how in-depth counsel wants to go around, you know, when we're talking about, you know, prognosticating our future, our future financial position, we're not going to have good data for you guys beyond what we really know anecdotally right now. You know, we suspect that there's a lot of other companies out there like Trident who are hurting, but we don't know who those are. You know, so anything, anything that we're, we're talking about is really guessing as to what the impact to us might be until, until that, that happens. So we know that that side of things doesn't look good, right? But we don't know what good means. I don't know that we really have the ability to find that, that data in a way that's, that's going to be meaningful. The rest of it, though, in terms of, you know, what would it look like if the, if we were to do, do this for the other, for all of the urbans, if we were to, where we could pull the funding from? A lot of that information we could pull together very quickly. So if that was the, maybe not quickly for, maybe not as quick as the upcoming committee of the whole, because that'll be put together, well, I guess in a few days here. So I guess there is a possibility that we could have it for the, for the next committee of the whole.
Counselor King?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I was thinking about that, and I, I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the next committee of the whole that we have scheduled is actually, if it's not this month, it's September. Is that correct? So if we're not addressing it here in June, we won't be addressing it likely till September. And so just, that's why I was seeking that clarity. So I guess the question is, do we want to try to address it here in June, or are we prepared to wait till September?
Would you be able to pull that information together before next Tuesday? Or some of that information?
I believe that we could, yes.
Okay. Is that something you'd like to add to the motion?
I will amend the motion being held in June as opposed to at a later date.
Great way to spend my anniversary, talking county finances.
Okay, so I guess if we can have some information pulled together by the 18th, which is next Tuesday, and determine how, how much of a shortfall there is in our taxes, or how many companies have not paid their requisitions, that would be helpful. Okay, someone, okay, we've got the motion before us. Is there any more discussion to that motion? Seeing's done, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried, so we've got another thing for committee of the whole next Tuesday. We have nine point two, Neale Regional Family Community FCSS. Someone like to make a motion to receive for information? Oh, Counselor Keever?
I'm over, receive the information from the Neale Regional Family and Community Support Services annual report.
Okay, motion's been made to receive for information. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Our next item on the agenda, nine point three, bylaw seventeen ninety-four. And welcome back, Barb.
Thanks, this is follow-up to the request to re-designate a portion of the northwest of thirty, thirty-three twenty-six, specifically rectangular piece of land with a panhandle approximately three hundred meters square from the agricultural district to direct control district six. Brian and Kathy Corrigan have applied to re-designate the subject lands from agricultural district to direct control district six to develop a micro cultivation for cannabis use, processing, and federal medical sales of cannabis. The property is a three point oh-one acre parcel, and the rezoned portion will be east of the residence along the easterly parcel boundary. First reading of this bylaw was done on March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Recent legalization of cannabis has triggered additions to the land use by law seventeen seventy-three, which include requirements for both cannabis recreational and medical production in cannabis retail facilities. Applications that include the cultivation of cannabis recreational production facilities in use are required to re-designate their property to a direct control district. Medical cannabis production facilities are required to re-designate to industrial. Since the nature of this application includes cultivation that could potentially be for recreational use as well as medical use, a direct control district would be the applicable district. The purpose of these districts is to provide for the development of land uses under individually unique circumstances, requiring site-specific controls where the application of conventional land use districts would be inappropriate or inadequate. Direct control districts enable council to specify those uses that may be allowed and gives council the authority to regulate and control the use, development, and subdivision of land or buildings in any such manner as council may consider necessary in the area designated as the direct control district. The development is of a unique form and nature, not contemplated or reasonably regulated by another district. The applicant is required to obtain a license through Health Canada, and if they are doing anything on the recreational side, that would be through AGLC as well. As required by the NGA, notifications were done on May twenty-second, twenty-ninth, and June fifth, and the public was, hearing was held today at ten AM. The following uses have been proposed for direct control district six, and you will note, there is a table there showing the uses, and they have been specifically included based on the application that we've received. Council has the ability to amend any of those uses, to change them to any side if you choose to move over to permitted or discretionary as you would. The re-designation fee was paid by the applicant, and our recommended action is that council move second reading for the purposes of amending land use by law seventeen seventy-three for the re-designation of a three hundred meter portion for the northwest of thirty thirty-three, and council consider further readings of bylaw seventeen ninety-four.
Thanks, Barb. Are there any questions for planner? Counselor King?
Yes, Mr. Eva, I would make the motion that council move second reading of bylaw seventeen nine four.
We have a motion to, for second reading. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing's, seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. So the regulations from the federal side are very strict, from what I gather?
Correct.
And very onerous on the applicant?
Correct. And the, the province is pretty similar in some of what they require as well. I didn't provide that today because he's largely focusing on medical at this point, but I think he's wanting to leave the door open in case they do some, but again, there will be no retail sale there.
Yeah, that's what I kind of gathered from. So as far as traffic goes, there shouldn't be any traffic, and security will be mandated by the, well, either the feds or the province.
The feds, and you also have an opportunity through the development permit to put on any of those conditions. So typically, we would follow some of what the feds require and ensure that we've got copies of their security plans or, or their perimeter security. copies of their security plans or, or their perimeter security and those types of things, so.
And the feds and the province would supersede any sort of conditions that we would put on there. Or, well, we could make up strict.
I think it's joined, and again, this is very new to everybody, so everyone's kind of trying to sort out where all the lines fall. Everybody's been given a piece of the pie and the ability, we have been granted authority under the MGA to have some ability to control where they go. We can't prohibit them, but we do have the ability, which we did address in our land use bylaw with proximity to public spaces, for example. So we did put some boundaries in around the recreational use side of that and the retail side. But again, they're always looked outside specifically.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Barb. And there really is no guarantee that the feds or the province will give a license either.
Correct. Like it is a big process, for sure.
But they need to have that license before we can allow it to go forward.
There, there's been some changes to the applications for, on the federal side. So when I, and I just downloaded their new application guide, which I had them email to me, because I don't think it's public yet. You can request it and they'll send it out. So under that, and this is, this is part of our challenge as a municipality, is the federal, because they have to do that site inspection and investigation report with their application, they're wanting the buildings, they're wanting all your perimeter, your fencing, all of that stuff in place. That's part of your application process to the federal government for that. So it does put us a bit in a quandary, because typically, we would go the other way and we'd want to see their license before we rezone, but because of the federal legislation does trump us in that regard and what they are asking for in their application process, they are needing to know that they are okay within the municipality, and we may have to do a development permit even for the buildings and some of that, so that that becomes part of their application into the federal side. So it is, and again, and we aren't privy when they change things. I, that's just from looking on their website and finding that out kind of by fluke, that they've upgraded and amended some of how they do that. So we're all learning. Unfortunately, it's, it's one of those processes that until we get a few of them through and kind of figure out where it's going to land, that's the way it's looking today, is they have to have that in place, and that's where that video comes in. They have to send that, the GPS coordinates of the corners of the buildings, all the rooms have to be named, what activities taking place in those rooms. So all of that is part of that application process to the federal government. So that's, that's where it's been a little bit challenging for us, is that they will have to go through our process first, I believe. Could change in a few months, but right now, that's the application guide, so.
Okay, well, thanks for the updated information, because I was just under the assumption that, well, I was under a different assumption.
Yeah, and I think initially, we all were, and then when we actually see it in writing and what they're requiring, it is looking like they do have to go through our process first, so.
Okay. Councillor Christie.
My question would be, we're allowed to have four personal plants in our home with little or no regulations. Is that right?
Correct.
So the control district would at least have us eyes on the window or some control of what's going on?
Absolutely. Like we do get a say in that, we, we do get an ability to condition that, but otherwise, you're right, they could be in every household, so. And they don't necessarily have to be indoors. Our bylaw requires indoors, so.
What's council's wishes? Councillor McGee.
I move third reading of bylaw 1794.
Okay, motion's been made to have third reading of bylaw 1794. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. I have one other thing there, and I should have added it to the agenda, and I didn't. There is Dr. R and R picnic, June the 13th of, yeah, well, 19, next Thursday, and Councillor Hugo has requested to go. Would someone like to give authorization for Councillor Hugo to attend the R and R picnic? Councillor McGee?
I move.
Okay. That's fine. Motion's been made to allow authorization for Councillor Hugo to attend the Dr. R and R to be held on June the 13th at 6:00 PM. I'm sure that's what you were going to say, right, Fay?
It's fabulous how you guys can figure me out.
It's that caption above your head. And that's how you'd like your motion to read, Councillor McGee?
Exactly what I said.
Awesome. Okay. All those in favor? Carried. We will now go on to council and committee reports. I don't see the Dr. R and R report in here, but I will do a verbal, from what I can remember of it. We do have a doctor that is leaving the clinic. I think it says of the end of July, which is unfortunate, but that being stated, she did not sign her contract to start with, so we don't have the issue of trying to get the recruitment bonus back. And the clinic has also been named as the best rural clinic in Alberta. So they're going to try to get a little bit of press out on that one, and hopefully, it helps with recruitment. But it's quite prestigious to be, to be the best rural clinic in Alberta. And I'm not sure what the criteria was, but whatever it was, they succeeded. Is there any questions on the council and committee reports? If not, I could use a motion to accept for information. Councillor King?
I'd make that motion that we receive the council, or the committee reports, so.
Okay. Motion's been made to receive council and committee reports for information. All those in favor? And that is carried. Council follow-up action list? Any questions, comments, concerns? Want to make a motion to receive for information? Councillor Christie?
I'll make a motion to, follow-up on, the follow-up action list be accepted as information.
Okay, motion's been made. All those in favor? And that is carried. And would someone like to move us into closed session for intergovernmental relations, section 21? Councillor King?
So moved into closed session.
Motion's been made to move.